Please thank them for me for all the work they're doing. Great picture of them working.
All right, we are on air now, Nancy. It's all yours.
Okay. Okay, welcome. It is Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. I am Nancy O'Kelly, President of the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 3:30 PM. And the first item is open session. Pardon me? We are in open session, and the first item is comments on closed session agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the closed session agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any, Dr. Avila?
We do not.
Okay. Then can I have the motion to move into closed session?
So moved. Ayala?
And can I have a second? Would somebody second the motion?
Martina's?
I second it. Montez? Okay, I had Martinez. I think he beat you to it, Edgar. And then vote by, oh, as provided by law, the following are the items for discussion and consideration at the closed session of the board meeting. And they are public employee employment, discipline, dismissal, release, reassignment of employees, government code section 54957. Second item, student expulsions, reinstatements, expulsion enrollments. Third item, conference with labor negotiators, agency designated representatives, Otte Makavila, EDD, superintendent, Rhea McGyver Gibbs, EDD, lead personnel agent, personnel services, and Rhonda Kramer, lead personnel agent, personnel services. Employee organizations, California School Employees Association, Chapter 203, CSEA, Rialto Education Association, REA, and Communication Workers of America, CWA. So now we will have a vote by board members to move into closed session. Please say aye or nay when I call on you. Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker? Vena?
You, uh...
Aye? Okay, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montez?
Aye.
And for me, it's an aye also. Okay. So, Dr. Avila, would you do whatever we need to do to move into closed session?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, we are back on air, so we are in open session, Mrs. O'Kelly.
Okay, thank you. And it's time to adjourn closed session. Can I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
Martinez.
Can I have a second? All right, and we're gonna vote by board members. O'Kelly, aye. Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay, and the time is 7:19. We are adjourned in closed session at 7:19. And we are reconvening open session, and we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will say, and everybody else can stand with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have a report out of closed session, Dr. Avila?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Then I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Martinez, motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, can I have a second? Walker, second.
Walker, second.
And vote by board members. For me, it's an aye. For Dina, it is a aye. For Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes? Have a second? Okay. All right, I got it all. But we move on to presentations, and it's Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, LCAP, that's the new, new name for it, I guess. And you should have received email from Martha with the PowerPoint in it, so you can follow along with the presentation if you want. Okay?
And before we get started, Mrs. O'Kelly, if I can just interject briefly, this is a presentation. I know there've been some concerns by some members of the community who were under the impression that today's present item that's being presented is up for approval. That will be presented at the following board meeting for your consideration for possible approval. So we still have time to gain input from the community. But I did get a few calls today regarding the item being on the agenda today for approval. It's not on for approval, it's a presentation.
Okay, I'd like to bring up again what I brought up to you the other day. This was about my third or fourth complaint of getting notice of the meeting, the morning of the meeting. Things like that cannot happen. These parents want to be involved, but they need sufficient notice. So if we could make sure that that happens, that would be good. This is a document that I want input from every stakeholder group, so I'm hoping we are doing that.
And that's the intent. And keep in mind that we did have, you know, the shutdown of technology, which a lot of information was lost, including emails. The email system was shut down, and so we could not send out additional communication to those parents who had signed up for the presentation. The original date was tipped, and that's the reason why we had very short turnout, but we did have or add additional meetings, and we intend to do that moving forward, so they can get as much input from the community as possible.
Okay. All right, you wanna go forward with the presentation then?
Yes, if you can introduce Carol for us, please.
Okay, Carol Mahachko is going to do the presentation. Are you ready, Carol?
I am ready. Can you hear me?
She is ready.
Okay.
Carol, are you there?
Yes, she is presenting right now.
Can you hear me?
How come I can't hear her?
Hold on a second. Let me ask staff if they're able to... Because we were under the impression, she's at the podium right now. She's in the boardroom. And we were under the impression that her mic was live.
Can you hear me now?
Are you able to hear her now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
My name's Carol Mahachko. I'm academic agent for special programs. And I'm here tonight to present to you the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And this has been a journey. I know, Miss O'Kelly, you refer to this as LCAP, but that's not necessarily what it is officially called.
That's the only mic in the car. That's why it's moving. I had it on mute. That's why it's moving.
So I'm coming a little bit closer, so I hope you can hear me even better.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so I hope the slides are displaying. I'm crossing my fingers. Technology's cooperating.
Are you able to see them, Mrs. O'Kelly?
I don't see anything except my phone.
Yeah, you're on YouTube, you'll see it.
Hey, give us a second, Mrs. O'Kelly. I understand that we need to be on YouTube viewing it as...
O'Kelly, we need to log in on YouTube.
Can you log into YouTube, Mrs. O'Kelly?
Uh, I'm on what?
It's on your paperwork?
Well, what do I do? Go to Safari and put it in the search bar?
Do you have a copy of the email that was sent to you last night? I believe the link is there, or the instructions are there? The one from Martha?
Yeah, I have a copy of the email. I didn't see any instructions with it.
So I can refer to what slide you're on?
She has, okay, she's referring, Martha suggesting that you look at the copy of the presentation. You have a copy there in front of you, and then Carol will walk us through it.
I'll read along. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have visual?
Question?
I, this is...
Board member Kelly? Yes, Dina. No, I still have not received an email, so I still don't have my login for my email. I've never received it. I got a text message saying...
I received the email, but I didn't...
I've got it live. For the public, search Rialto Unified S D in YouTube. So open YouTube, then in the search bar, search for Rialto Unified S D, as in school district. And all of them should come up. And then upper left-hand corner is the current viewing model that you want. In YouTube. So open YouTube. Yes, open YouTube. Then in the search bar, center of the YouTube page, Rialto Unified S D, as in school district, all one word, no spaces. And on mine, it comes up, the second one down, says live now. Latest from Rialto Unified S D.
Turn in the volume down on your TV if you're listening to the phone conference. Otherwise, you're gonna hear double, twice, everything you're gonna hear twice. First from the TV, then from the phone conference.
Excellent.
Thank you for that. If you can just let us know once you either have your email or are logged on to the website, so that we can proceed, once each board member is, has access to the presentation.
I'm ready to be viewed.
I'm on, I'm on YouTube.
Are you all ready?
So we just need Mrs. O'Kelly and Dina, you can let us know when you're ready.
I have a question.
Yeah, I have looked for Rialto.
Go ahead, Nancy.
What do I search for on YouTube? I, I got Unified School District, but I didn't see this. So is it Rialto U S B, or?
No, Rialto Unified S D, all one word.
Rialto Unified, all one word?
Yes. Don't forget the S D at the end.
When you open it, it shows a executive order from Governor Gavin Newsom, April 2020.
Just do it.
On my page, it comes up with a bunch of Rialto logos. And on my page, it's the second one down, says live now, and gives a date, Board of Education, 9/9/2020.
And Saidah Joffrey is also texting you a link, if that will make it easier?
Absolutely.
Well, probably, because I did not get this one. I have everything else for Rialto Unified. I don't see anything about tonight's presentation.
And are you in YouTube?
Yeah, I'm in YouTube.
If you could have Ms. Joffrey text it, or put it on, that way the public can also view it.
You've gotta, you've gotta, you have to, if you're on the phone conference, you have to use a separate device to watch YouTube. For example, I'm watching it on TV, YouTube on my TV, and I'm participating on the phone conference with my phone, I won't be able to log on to YouTube and participate in the conference at the same time.
This is board member Walker, and I've been on the YouTube, so I'm good on the YouTube, but I would like,
Thank you.
Dr. Avila, if you can have somebody, please.
Saidah just texted.
No, no, I'm good on the YouTube. I was able to access it that way.
Okay.
I still need my access to my Gmail, board Gmail account, so I don't have to.
Take care of that.
Well, that's a, thank you.
Nancy, let us know once you are able to log on.
I've got a little miniature screen of the first page, so I guess I am ready to go.
Okay, so Carol is on standby. She'll proceed. I believe everybody is ready to go. Thank you so much for your patience.
Okay.
Well, this is actually exactly why we're here. So basically, this plan is in response to what we're, as a district, in response to COVID-19, so both distance learning, and, you know, if we are cleared to be able to move to a hybrid model. So this first slide I'm showing is just the first executive order that Governor Newsom signed in April 2020. And that basically had changed the timeline for our LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan. And so we were in the midst of starting to write that draft for the three-year plan in March of 2020, when everything happened. And so basically, this executive order changed the timeline for LCAP, changed different deadlines. It also is what waived our testing for last spring, so that we don't have a dashboard this current fall. And another key piece that really was the impetus for this plan was SB 98, Senate Bill 98. That was a trailer bill that was signed on the last, almost the last day of June, June 29, 2020. And it was approved a little more than a month before the start of school, and had specific parameters that we needed to implement as a district and to consider and plan for for the 2020-2021 school year. So that's a little bit of background of what brought us here. But I have this visual now that might be hard to see on a smaller screen, so when you can see it in a larger screen, it might be helpful. And it's a visual that I also shared in the parent meetings, to really show where we're at. And so there was a roadblock that happened, roadblock that happened in March 2020. We are responding, and we're still responding, to COVID-19 and the world pandemic. So essentially, the LCAP that we were working on, that was going to be the three-year plan for 2020 till 2023, was really kind of changed and melded to fit to what our reality's been. So if you do remember, as a board, there was a brief narrative plan that you all approved from the end of June. And that plan is posted on our website. That was done at the same time the budget meeting was, but again, it was more addressing the past. How did we, as a district, respond from March 2020 until the end of the school year? Now we're at this orange sign, where it's the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And basically, that's where we're today, and it does have to be approved by the board by September 30, 2020. So it is here today for review, for the public hearing, and we will be bringing a final draft to you on the 23rd, your review, to be able to see if we can get that approved. Once that conversation is closed, we actually will start up an LCAP conversation again, and we will be bringing to you a draft of our LCAP for 2021 to 2024 at the end of June. So that's a little bit of why we're here. Now, this slide here, if you can see, is just a little bit about the journey so far. We had a very tight timeline to do this Learning Continuity Plan. And because it was all new information, we had to start with just kind of scrambling to figure out what did some of the language mean. Our first steps, of course, we did, met with both bargaining units, REA and CSEA, to make memorandums of understanding. We have had numerous parent meetings via Google Meet. Again, we're trying to adapt, as our teachers are in the classroom. So we, because we can't do large groups, we've been doing town hall meetings in virtually. And we've tried different times. We also sent out surveys to our families, and we had approximately 2,000 families respond to that as well. We've been working with different stakeholder groups. We've had small group meetings with principals, with teachers. Again, different representation, depending on the piece of the plan that we're trying to get input for. So that's a little bit about this. I do want to point out, this is like the LCAP that we submit to the county for review, but this legislation says that the county office actually has days where they have to review it and then give us feedback. So they're more than likely, we will actually come back in either October or November with their suggestions and potential changes for your approval and review. So that's how this is a little bit different than the LCAP. Another thing that's different is the requirements. SB 98, again, that really has been the impetus of this plan, and it had some specific talking points that we have to address. First and foremost is the internet connectivity, and we know as a district, we've been having some issues, but we are very resilient, and we've been making things work. But we definitely, first and foremost, make sure that our students are getting the devices, as well as, as well as have access to the internet. Different than in the spring, where our focus was more on review, we actually are presenting in instruction, new instruction, and we want to make sure that it's challenging and its content aligned to the grade level standards, and is equal to what we would be providing in person, if that were possible. Supports to address the needs of students. You know, several different student groups in particular are addressed in this plan. There's, in each section, there is a part where Bridget Ely and her team have actually written out some specific actions for special ed students. Dr. Madrid has worked to add some specific actions for our English learners. Actually, right before this, I just... Um, actually, right before this, I just came from a, um, a community meeting with some parents that are involved with Daypack. So, you know, again, we're getting information input to make sure African-American students are represented. So, and that's just, you know, three of the groups where we're looking at any possible underserved student that might need additional support because of our model of distance learning or Bridge Academy or when we move to hybrid. So again, that's a little bit of what the plan asks us to do. This next slide are the specific headings of the plan. So where it talks about continuity, the focus really is, how are we offering, offering distance learning, or as we're calling it in Rialto Bridge Academy? We also know, once public health and, you know, all the stars align that we need to be able to offer in person, we have to have a plan. What does that look like as we transition in? Um, a key piece that we have actually spending a lot of time, time and conversation is pupil learning loss. And that is where it spells out specific data that we're going to collect as a district, looking at two-year trends, and our focus areas will be in ELA, mathematics, and ELD, English Language Development for English learners. So there are specific data points and plans of how we're gonna actually work with our school sites so that they will be able to create actions in their school plans to address these issues and make sure that those learning losses are, um, addressed. Um, there is a key section on mental health and social emotional wellbeing that has some actions from many different team members and ed services, including Angela Brantley's department with Student Services, um, Bridget Ely with Special Education Services. You know, so it's, it's really kind of, of many listed in different, three different levels. You know, students that, what we're doing for all students, or what we're doing for some that need even more, you know, intensive support. And then finally, those students that need the most intensive support. Um, pupil engagement and outreach is basically how we're making sure that even though we're at a distance, our students are connecting with school. And how do we outreach if they're not connecting? Um, the next section is school nutrition, which we know our nutrition services have been doing many great things since the start of our world pandemic and our response. And so that's outlined of how they're providing support both during Bridge Academy as well as when we return to face-to-face. And similar to the LCAP, it actually does call out the same groups that are in ad code for foster youth English learners and socio-economically disadvantaged students. And this is highlighting the above and beyond support for those students. So I wanted to give you just a little bit of a flavor of some of the things that are in the plan. If you look at our district webpage and you scroll down to the right-hand side where it says LCAP, the, the draft of this plan is available that parents can view, that you, yourselves can view, the public can view, as we're working to do some fine tuning on our actions. Uh, but we have, you know, we know already as a district, we have responded with Bridge Academy. And this is a screenshot of something that was actually on the fact sheet that's been on the district webpage. So it's a little bit of the rationale of why we're starting with Bridge Academy. But again, it has other information for parents. Um, we know as a district, we've actually done many of these steps already. We're gonna tech, you know, it's more of a narrative of the past, not necessarily what we're going to do in the future. But we have worked on distributing technology to our students. And, you know, again, with our hiccup with our different issues we've had, we might have had to collect, but we're gonna distribute again those devices. Not only do the students have access to their technology, but the actual textbook materials that they need are also been distributed. And what's ongoing is our ongoing training for our teachers, the fabulous job that they're doing in supporting our students. But we know that there's a learning curve for some of us as we learn how to navigate this world, um, digitally. So again, this is just pulling from the section of pupil, pupil learning loss, student learning loss. This is some of the data points in specific that we're already going to be looking at. In K8, we're gonna be using eye, eye-ready diagnostic data to be able to look in specifically the areas of math and ELA. And 912, we're using benchmark and other assessment data. And then for English learners in particular, um, a board item that came probably last spring, I believe, was elevation. And it's a product that actually pulls out EL data specifically so that we can target those students, know what their needs are, and be able to review kind of in an easier format, um, what we need to do to address their concerns. And as this says, the site will be creating plans of action to address, um, all the student groups that may not be meeting those targets. Um, again, there is a section, and we know that this world pandemic and the response to COVID-19 does have a lot of social, emotional, um, toll, not only on our students, but our families and staff as well. So we have some things for all students, like we are continuing PBIS, but through a distance learning platform. You know, some schools, it was a board item that came up last, last meeting about panorama education with different kind of survey and screeners that students go through to give more detailed data. Um, there is a form to refer a student for assistance that any district employee can refer. And then finally, training, which again is a key part, again, through Student Services, um, where trauma-informed practices, virtual community circles, and building resilience. So again, uh, this, some of the actions that are highlighted. And that essentially is just a brief overview of what our plan is. And I have my contact information, but I'll open it now if you have any questions.
Carol, um, board members, do any of you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you. Martinez?
Ayala's good.
No question at this time. Okay. All right then. Uh, thank you, Carol. We'll move on to the next item. Uh, we're moving into comments. Am I still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, first item is public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any, uh, those comments, Dr. Avila?
Uh, yes, we do. So we said comments, uh, let's see, not on the agenda. Yes.
Right.
So it says, "Good evening, board members. Dr. Avila, I want to let the board know once again about our students that receive services from special education. We have students that have IEPs, students that IEPs have yet, uh, to be done, and we are trying to play catch-up from the IEPs from November of 2019." Yes, 2019. "The district is not keeping up with the mission nor strategic goals in place. This is very frustrating for parents, and of course, the ones that keep suffering, the consequences are our children. I am asking the board to request reports of IEPs that are currently out of compliance. Then you will see. Enough is enough. Also, I want to ask the board, since no one seems to know, why we have waiting lists for students to get the necessary technology to access their education? This should not be happening. For example, at Carter High School, they have a waiting list from August 14th, 2020 to get a hotspot. And even after that, parents are receiving poor work, uh, notices for their students. How is that okay? I also asked the board, why is it that parents that have parent advocates or attorneys get special treatment? Uh, there are parents that cannot afford to have legal representation. Those parents should also be heard and treated with respect. English learners, again, parents have yet to see a school-wide plan. Parents have been asking for this plan for several years now and nothing. All that keeps happening is meeting after meeting and wasting time. No actual plan. Yes, another of the district's goals. I understand with the crisis and the hiccups we are currently going through, however, that is no excuse. Some of the concerns that I bring to you have been from before COVID-19. You can even go back to videos from prior board meetings, uh, when I have brought these concerns regarding special education and English learners. Thank you for your time. Everyone be safe. Have a good evening. Mirna Ruiz." That's all we have.
Okay. Uh, the next item is public comments on agenda items. Do we have any of those, Dr. Avila?
Uh, we have none.
Okay. Move on to comments from Association Executive Board Members, starting with Rialto Education Association, REA. Do we have any comments?
Yes, we do. "Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope everyone is staying safe and well. This Friday, classes will be leveled at the elementary and middle schools. What this means is that all classes will be at or below contractual class size limits per our contract. As you make decisions on the distribution of students and teachers, please keep in mind that moving students to another teacher and having the teacher move, school size will be very disruptive. Combination classes are not the best solution when schools are running normally. And increasing the number of combinations during distance learning is not the answer. Please consider hiring teachers at the sites where they are needed and not collapsing classes and disrupting our students' learning further during this pandemic. Remember, every decision we make is in the best interest of students. Thank you for your time and continued support. Lisa Lindberg, President, REA."
Okay, thank you. We move on with California School Employees Association, CSEA. Do we have any comments?
We have, uh, none.
None? Okay. How about Communication Workers of America, CWA?
We have none.
And Rialto School Managers Association, RSMA?
We have none.
Okay. Uh, now it's time for comments from the superintendent. Go ahead, Dr. Avila.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. And tonight, it's, uh, uh, very brief. I just want to continue to thank, uh, the parents, the students, uh, staff for your support and patience, uh, during this, uh, you know, pandemic, but also during the, uh, recent, uh, the recent shutdown of our technology. Uh, we know that it's been, uh, just an added burden on other things that we were already going through prior to it, uh, happening. But we're very happy to, uh, know that we're back online with, uh, students in elementary and middle school. And plans are to have our high school students, seniors, uh, up and running this coming Monday and the rest of the, uh, students in high school on, uh, Wednesday. So we're very excited to get them back, uh, online, uh, and learning as they should, uh, should be. And with that, I just want to thank all of the staff in IT, uh, staff and personnel, and fiscal, and, and, uh, purchasing, and other departments, ed services, uh, special education, who have worked tirelessly the last few weeks to try to bring us back to some sense of normalcy. And normalcy at this time is really through Bridge Academy. Uh, we know that we're going to be using this model for some time. I do encourage everyone to continue to practice safe, uh, habits. Uh, because as we know, uh, Rialto is one of the, uh, highest hubs or the hubs with the highest rate of, uh, COVID, uh, transmissions. And so we want to make sure that we continue to have decreases in, in those areas because we want to return back to the traditional normal of in-person instruction as soon as possible. But that is going to take a collective effort by everyone so that we can be safe enough for us to return. Uh, with that, I will, uh, transition back to you, President O'Kelly.
Okay. Now we have comments from the board. Can we start with, uh, Mr. Ayala?
Well, thank you, President O'Kelly. I just want to remind everybody that, uh, we still have a 20% uh, drop in revenue, uh, in the state. And, uh, that is going to reflect on budget cuts, obviously, to school districts. It is a result, and I want to remind people of lower revenue because there's less people working, so there's less personal taxes collected. There's less corporate taxes collected. And there's less sales taxes collected. This is probably the biggest hit is the sales tax. Due to people in general not, uh, being able to make purchases the way they did before COVID crisis. So, um, I'm highly concerned about that and how it's gonna reflect on education. So, uh, it is important to be proactive, not wait till the last minute. Because it worries me that, you know, to lose one person, one staff, one job, these families will be hit hard. It's gonna be difficult for them to be hired. On another note, teacher educational, uh, institutions that produce teachers, uh, there's less teachers being produced. And so if we lose teachers, the high-quality ones that we have now, it's gonna be even more difficult, uh, down the road. So that means that would be, uh, a disservice to our community to lose those teachers. Another note, uh, just a little research here on what causes problems for other school districts besides what I just mentioned is, uh, the opportunities that when somebody falls, another entity picks up. And what I mean by that is you have charter schools out there trying to compete for business. And when they come into a school district, uh, there's cause and effect here, okay? If that's one way to explain it, okay? The, the effect may sound like, uh, you know, it's gonna be a, a good thing for the kids. But actually, in the long run, it's like, uh, there's gonna be more administration involved. The, the school district that they come into to work and service has to pay, uh, out additional monies to, uh, subsidize those charter schools. So I, uh, being on the, uh, on the board here, I'm strongly encouraging for the board members in our school district to stay, uh, alert as, uh, charters try to, uh, find opportunities to get in. And it happened in, uh, Los Angeles, and it was not a, uh, a, a good report. So let's just stay alert, let's stay proactive, let's, uh, let's think about what's gonna happen in the near future. And let's, that's, this is the time to practice, uh, fiscal, uh, conservancy. If that's one way for conservation, okay? So, uh, Ms. O'Kelly, uh, thank you for the opportunity to share a few words with the community. And, uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Okay, moving on to Mr. Montez. Comments?
Thank you, Board President, Mrs. Nancy O'Kelly. I just would like to, uh, continue to ask for patience, um, from our, from our staff and, and, and from our parents, uh, our students, especially, uh, we have some students, uh, who are extremely frustrated with the distance learning. We have some students who are adapting very well and some who are actually excelling, uh, with distance learning. But for those students who are having a hard time, who are having a difficult time adjusting, uh, to distance learning, for the parents who are having a difficult time, um, uh, I, I, I just would like to continue to ask for patience. We don't know when we will go back to traditional, uh, schooling. My only guess will be that most likely, we, uh, we will continue with distance learning until, uh, there are some major developments and changes for the better in regards to the pandemic, uh, the ongoing pandemic. I get a lot of calls, a lot of, uh, text messages and, uh, and, uh, emails about when are we gonna go back to school? Uh, when can students go back to class? Uh, and I, I feel helpless, uh, not being able to answer that. But my guess that is, uh, even when we do start back to traditional schooling, uh, it will be a, uh, a step-by-step, uh, procedure where, um, you know, people continue to use math as best as possible. Uh, and, uh, some type of social distance use will be practiced. This is unfortunate, this is, unfortunately, the situation has just really changed our way of life in many ways. Um, and it continues to be a major stress factor for many people, both at home, at work, uh, and in regards to schooling. But, uh, we have to continue to stay strong, uh, for, uh, our families, for our loved ones, and for each other. ones, and for each other, and, um, and hopefully things will get better soon. I, I just would like to thank, uh, our, uh, our teachers who, um, uh, working diligently, uh, working hard, um, are trying to do the best that they can. Uh, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, all of the support staff who are, are also, uh, playing a major role in, in making it all possible. Um, it wasn't easy, I'm sure, to swap out all of the, uh, laptops, uh, it wasn't easy to pause distance learning after, uh, some progress and, and bringing everything to a complete stop for a few weeks, a couple weeks. Um, but I commend all of the school sites, uh, who, who work hard to swap those laptops out and, uh, and, and all of the schools who started, uh, back up to the first opportunity they had, and, and ask for patience for those who still have not, uh, really fully come back on distance learning. It's going to take some time and, 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 and I believe most schools are now back on distance learning, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Avila.
Uh, please repeat, Mr. Montes. You broke up a little bit on the question.
Most, most schools are back and kicking as far as distance learning.
Yes, the, the vast majority, all elementary and middle schools are up and running, and again, high school, uh, seniors will be up on Monday, and the rest of the ninth through eleventh grade, uh, classes will be up, uh, next Wednesday. So yes, the majority of schools are up and running.
And, and, uh, and, and, and really, um, you know, I, I, uh, I like to joke around and, and, uh, and get around, you know, to try to find ways to remain positive at a time like this, but, uh, boy, oh, boy, do parents really miss their school peo-, their kids' school teachers and their kids' schools, uh, at a time like this. Uh, I don't think anybody's, uh, ever expected to go for long without, um, you know, being able to, um, uh, have, uh, our, our normal way of life of, of, of our children going to school for, uh, you know, six, seven hours a day, and, uh, and the, and the media, and then, and the TikTok videos and all of them talking around of, of the parents and, uh, you know, uh, complaining about, you know, "Please, please open back up." It, it just makes me laugh, you know, and, and we got to try to find ways to remain positive and, and, uh, and, and, and enjoy life, uh, you know, uh, do a laugh and do a smile. But, um, uh, that's all I have for, for tonight. Uh, let's continue to work hard and be patient and try to step by step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Well, um, you know, I agree with everyone. Thank you to all our staff, especially in IT, for, um, the, the jobs they're doing, getting us back up and running, for, uh, the teachers and, uh, other staff members just keeping things going best we can, and, uh, the community, uh, and students, of course, for, uh, being, giving us grace through this trying time. Uh, for about the past three days, at least this week, I've been going over security reports, cybersecurity reports, uh, curating some of the reports and gleaning the network's security best practices from them, and I'll be making recommendations to the board and to Dr. Avila. In the meanwhile, um, I have items that I will be sending you, Dr. Avila, that, uh, IT can verify once they get, you know, breathing room again. Um, a security checklist, um, that we discussed, um, that way we can minimize the possibility of any recurrence. In short, um, the kind of things that, uh, that they found out of three reports were that the way we get infected in education is different than anybody in industry or manufacturing, insurance, uh, finance, or hospitals. Everyone gets it through emails. We get it mostly through student browsing. So, um, with the pandemic coming upon us so quickly, there's a good chance that we didn't have a chance to tighten the controls down, uh, for virtual, uh, learning, distance learning. Um, they were saying, um, in control recommendations, to secure configuration for hardware and software on mobile devices, laptops, workstations, and servers. They were probably tight, but they needed to be tighter for distance learning. Um, to secure configuration for network devices such as firewalls, routers, and switches. Um, I have that list coming to you, Dr. Avila. Uh, boundary defense, as, as we discussed, um, segmentation and micro-segmentation so the network is, um, not as easy to, to peruse. Uh, and implement, and this is important for everybody, not, not just IT, but for us to implement a security awareness and training program. It is available. I'll be forwarding that information to you as well, uh, with recommendations. And then to verify, uh, five other items. So, um, to make this as short as possible, I am done. Thank you, REA, for your endorsement. It means a whole lot. We've gone through 12 years, and I hope for another, um, 12 to 24. Um, I'm in it. I'm in it for the long term. I thank you for recognizing it. Back to you, President O'Kelly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Uh, now we move on to Vice President, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, President O'Kelly. Uh, just want to say, uh, I'm just so glad that the schools, uh, are open up, our, our K8s are open up and kids are back in, uh, in their virtual classrooms. Uh, I know we still got a couple of challenges, and we're waiting for the onboarding of our high schools, and so definitely excited that at least, um, our high schools will start next week. I have fielded, um, several calls, uh, around high school, when is high school going to start? So good to hear that, uh, and to share with the public. Just a reminder, um, this season is going to be very different for our college application processes, um, just to make sure that families and the communities know that applying for college is still going to be the same this year. The only difference is the ACT, excuse me, the SAT and the ACT, um, is not mandatory for our CSUs and UCs. Um, so if you weren't able to, your child or somebody in your family was not able to take the SAT, uh, or ACT due to, uh, the pandemic, no worries, uh, at least for this particular, uh, for this particular, uh, semester of applying. So don't let that hold you back. There's still financial aid that's going to be there. The application season is the same. It's going to be a little bit extended. Oh, I know CSUs are going to, instead of November 30th, it'll, oh, close in the, the first week of December. So you'll have a couple of more days to make sure that happens. We just don't want to discourage anyone to be discouraged about applying to college, even though these circumstances are a lot different than we thought they were going to be. We want to be there to help you, to support you, to get your information, get you that information, and know that we're here, uh, our district is still here, to support you on that process. Uh, so just want to make sure that everybody knows that, um, high schools will be back in place, your councils will be available and to help you and support you. So those families, uh, we just looking forward to bringing you all back in, into the fold and supporting you, um, on your educational journey. And thank you to the district staff and teachers in class, in class and out of class, and virtually, because I know it has been a time for you all as well, uh, and it's hopefully, hopefully we're giving you the support that you need, uh, to be effective, um, at school that I know you love and you want to be there for the students. So thank you again for all your support to the in-class and out-of-class staff, um, for helping us, and I look forward to what's going to happen next, in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. And now it's on to me, and I want to say good evening. I hope, uh, everyone is found that they're able to deal with the quote-unquote "new normal," which isn't normal at all, but that's what they're calling it. I want to thank our teachers and our staff for all of their hard, hard work, uh, with distance learning and everything that's going along with it. I know that IT, uh, has been working constantly to ensure that our students have the technology to do distance learning. Nutrition Services has provided, um, daily lunch-breakfast combos to our students and has partnered with organizations to provide boxes of food to families in our communities. Our teachers are working diligently to provide a wonderful educational experience for our students under these adverse conditions. From what I've been told, distance learning and teaching, uh, uh, virtually is much more time-consuming, much more difficult, and much more exhausting than regular classroom teaching. So I am hoping that things will improve so we can begin to get our kids back in school and back into a, a setting that we're more familiar with. And I also want to thank all of our students who I know are experiencing frustrations and, uh, difficulties with the distance learning, but I know you are trying to make the best of everything and working hard, and we're here to try to support you in the way we can. And I also want to thank REA for their endorsement. After, you know, I was a teacher for many, many years, and I am so honored to be endorsed by, uh, the Rialto Education Association. So thank you all so much. And that is all for me tonight. And so we will move on to public hearing. I need a motion to open public hearing.
Walker, so moved?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Um, the... Oh, who was that? Montes, okay. And we need a vote by board members to open public hearing. Um, so that's an aye for me. Uh, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay, we are opening public hearing at 8:10 PM. And let me read the, uh, public hearing, uh, was the learning continuity and attendance plan, well, it says adoption. It says, "Not the adoption." This was just a public hearing, so that adoption is a typo up there. Education Code, uh, Section 52062B1 requires that the governing board of a school district shall hold at least one public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed to be included in the local control and accountability plan or annual update to the local control and, and, uh, accountability plan. The agenda for the public hearing shall be posted at least 72 hours before the public hearing, and shall include the location where the local control and accountability plan or annual update to the local control and annual, annual accountability plan will be available for public inspection. All right? Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Mrs. O'Kelly, we do have two speakers on the item.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So if you can read, yeah, if you can read that first, uh, intro under D1?
What is that? The Education Code, Section 52062B1, requires that a governing board of a school district shall hold at least one public hearing to solicit the recommendations and comments, comments of members of the public regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed to be included in the local control and accountability plan or annual update to the local control and the accountability plan. Was that what you wanted me to read?
No, at the very beginning where it says "any person wishing to speak" on the item.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I skipped right over that. Any person wishing to speak on the item on the public hearing agenda will be granted in three minutes.
Thank you. We do have two speakers. And first, we have, "Good evening, uh, board members. Dr. Avila, I want to urge the board not to approve the learning continuity and attendance plan, D1.1." Point one. This plan is not complete. It has no parent input. Yes, three required meetings have been done, however, the discussions have only been presentations, not actual input from parents. So this plan has no parent voice. At last week's meeting, Thursday, it was brought up, uh, to have another special session to actually have parent input. Once again, I ask the board not to approve the plan until all stakeholders have genuinely participated. Trying to rush a plan will only fail. The board and district need to stop ignoring parents and/or voices. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Mirna Ruiz. The next one, uh, reads, "I am concerned with the forward movement of this proposal. During the last learning continuity and attendance plan meeting, it was expressed by many that the proposal was not complete and ready for approval. There has not been enough parent participation and input to solidify the approval of this proposal. The meeting, meetings that were held only consisted of presentations and not public input. Due to the malware issues and the late posting of the proposal's draft, the public was unable to review the proposal and offer input. The data that was collected thus far is not a representation of the district's voice. It is imperative that this proposal is tabled until further input can be gathered and added to the proposal. This concern was voiced at the last LCAP meeting, and Mrs. Mahashko and Dr. McDuchy, uh, were in agreement to tabling it prior to sending it to board for approval and assuring that another meeting would be held before the proposal went to the board. I am asking the board to table this proposal until after the next learning continuity and attendance meeting." Thank you, Brenda Parker. So that is all we have.
Okay. Uh, thank you, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, but I want to reassure them, we are not approving the plan tonight. This is just, uh, the public hearing part, and that's what I have to read during, uh, public hearing, and, uh, now we're going to close public hearing, and you will have another meeting before we actually adopt the learning continuity and attendance plan.
And that is correct.
Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
Martinez?
Can I have a second?
Walker, second?
All right. For me, it's an aye. Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. So we are closing public hearing at 8:15 PM. All right, we move on to the consent calendar. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? And a second? Will someone second the motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Montes?
And are there any polls, uh, anything you want polled before we go ahead and vote? All right, we'll move on. Uh, vote by board members to approve consent calendar items. For me, it's an aye. For Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So now we're moving on with discussion action items. Uh, F1, Resolution Number 202104, relative to the unaudited actuals 2019, 2020, and estimated 2020, 2021 GAN appropriations limit. All right, can I have a motion to approve this item? Can I have a second?
Walker, second?
Okay. And the item reads, "Accept the district's actual appropriations limit for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year as 261,973,400." 2020 fiscal year as $261,973,426. The district's estimated appropriations limit for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year is $271,745,035. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 202104, which declares that the GAN limit appropriations in the 2019, 2020 unaudited actuels and the 2020, 2021 budget do not exceed the limitations imposed by Proposition 4 at no cost to the district." Is there a vote to approve this limit of this item?
Aye. Martinez?
Okay, we, that's right, we have the motion. I gotta go by board member. For me, it's an aye. For Ms. Walker? Aye. Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye, with reservations.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Uh, F2, Fiscal Year 2019, 2020, Unaudited Actuels Financial Report. Uh, can I have a motion to approve this item? Is anyone going to move to approve this?
Martinez?
Is there a second? You received a binder with your board packet. That's the unaudited actuels financial report in there. Walker, second? Okay, the item reads, "Approve the fiscal year 2019, 2020, unaudited actuels financial report as presented. The report will be submitted under a separate cover and is also available on the district website at no cost to the district." So, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I know numbers are written on paper, and they balance and they look good, but keep in mind, we still have a deficit. The state has a deficit, and this does not show on this report. So even though the report looks good...
Dr. Avila, is Mr. Islam available to address this issue, or Ms. Romo?
Yeah, stand by. Mohammed stepped out of the room. I believe he's on his way. He can give us a minute. And keep in mind, this report was for the 2019, 2020, this past year, meaning the report summarizes what was spent, the actual expenditures. Okay, Mr. Islam is in the room. Give him one minute for him to come over, but what are the questions?
Well, is he in the room yet?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Good evening, Mohammed.
Good evening, Ms. Ayala. How are you?
I'm doing real good. I hope you're doing the same.
Thank you.
My concern is that we have a deficit in the state. We don't have the revenues. We're down probably 20%. That's going to reflect on what we have to spend in the future years to come. I know the report shows that we're balancing, but the predictions are that if the federal government doesn't bail us out in the coming years with the current administration, then it comes right back to us to submit the positive reports. We've been down this road before, and it worries me. If I was a staff member, if I was a teacher, I would want to see a Plan B. And I just don't see the Plan B, and I know this was for 2019, 2020 expenditures, but I would feel more comfortable if we could reassure our employees at the district that we have a Plan B, or that we're going to find a way to save jobs and move forward, which I do not hear coming from our district, and I don't hear it coming from other districts, because this is a statewide dilemma. And I know we're one of the few districts that have the CNG pumping station. I know that might be something that we might be able to use, but anything that we can do to start moving that Plan B, to help bring people at ease so they don't have to worry, we need to be proactive and do it as of yesterday. And so, it may be an easy question. Sure, I don't mean to put you... Anything that you can say to help our community, I really believe it will be appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala, your concerns. As you know, we understand, and I'm going to speak from my point of view, being 34 years in this business, this is a very unusual time we're living through, as you know, and what to expect going forward. I call myself, this health crisis is going to bring a financial crisis, which is the next phase we have to wait and see how bad it's going to be. You are absolutely correct. We all understand how economy works. And, yeah, so my take on it from fiscal point of view, as you recall, that last June, you as a board, I appreciate your support, adopting some of the resolutions, which really helped us being proactive in the plan. And with Dr. Avila's, under his leadership, we had some conversations we have with our management team. We are, again, you are absolutely correct, we have to be proactive on the matter, how we can sustain fiscal solvency going forward. So, closing the books, it's good news that we are, looks healthy, but everything I'm speaking today, I don't know what's coming in January. I don't know what's even coming next month under federal government to begin the fiscal year. Everything is unpredictable right now, but we all can assume and based on our experience what is coming. Is a rainy day ahead of us? Absolutely rainy days ahead of us. And that's my assessment of the matter. But we will know as time getting close to fiscal, beginning of October, once the federal government adopt their budget, how much they're going to help the state. As you recall, the governor Newsom deferred the cut. He did say that he may come back in October or January. And what we know, I know, I'm going to speak again from my point of view, that I knew that the matter, he just compromised, and he deferred the reductions of the funding for education for later date. If the federal government don't bail us out, he knows, we know he's going to trigger the cut. So my response to you, to let you know the Board, we're doing everything we can to ensure that we're not, we sustain fiscal solvency, to ensure that our employees are not affected. With the COVID-19, as you know, we end up surprised savings under the circumstance of the, we are running our businesses. So we have a one-time savings realized coming from last year to the closing the books. But the bottom line, I'm going to say to you as a Board, I don't know what to expect in January or next month as of right now. And those are unpredictable, and I cannot throw any number until we know, and I believe we will be prepared and ready and bring the information to you as a Board early on, so there'll be no surprise. So, again, can I say we're ready? No, we don't know yet. How can I prepare something I don't know? But we are, we had some pre-planning conversations last June. At that time, we didn't know that the governor is going to compromise the level of cut he's going to make, and it was good news for us. It came after our Board adopted the budget and resolutions really helped. And we did receive as a good news that our budget has been officially adopted and approved as of yesterday. The letter has been received by the districts. Dr. Avila has a copy. I think he also has a copy of your letter, most likely you are getting soon, or if you did not receive it yet. That's a good news to you as a Board for your support through the budget process by adopting those resolutions. In absence of those resolutions, I could probably, can speak to you today, bring a bad news, but I'm giving a good news. So I thank you for your support, and thank you for Dr. Avila and the other members who engaged in that process. So, again, back to you, Ms. Ayala, that your concerns is valid concern, but we need to be...
Colonel Kelly? Yes, yes.
May I just finish a few comments?
Okay.
Thank you. When I refer to a Plan B, it may not be a popular one, okay? But I'm going to offer some strong suggestions. Okay. Last in, first out. That doesn't ring very well with me. I honestly believe COVID will be resolved, and so, but we can't say when, but it will be resolved. And if we can hang tight, if we can be known as the district that saved their employees, that saved, that took care of them during this pandemic and during this crisis, it would be so monumental, so unprecedented, because we could be known as, we could go from good to great in Rialto. And here's the strong language, okay? Plan B could take, take the shape of where we could balance the budget if the unions came together and decided to take a pay cut. Everybody would not, we could save the jobs of our employees. And if that only lasted for a year or two until COVID, then we could rebound back and make do what we lost. Another way is you cut expenditures. We would definitely have to cut back, and that's on the back of programs of our kids. That's not an easy one, but it does save jobs. So, these are examples. Or we get bailed out by the federal government, or all of a sudden, the revenues are up in the state again. So there's four choices there. But we need to start thinking now before, you know, we, our back is up against the wall, and the county wants that positive report, and they threaten us with a takeover of the district. You're going to see, you know, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but there is a good possibility that a lot of districts are just going to balance their budgets on the backs of those young staff members who came in last, and I don't want to see that. Thank you, Mohammed, for the opportunity to reiterate what we all know is inevitable. I just, it's not an easy time to be on the Board, but, you know, if we can come together and make it a priority to come up with a Plan B, everybody will sleep better at night. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Okay, we're voting on item F2 on the unaudited actuels. For me, it's an aye. For Ms. Walker? Aye. For Mr. Martinez?
No question, these numbers are good for this year. Aye.
Okay, Mr. Ayala?
Aye, with reservations.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. Now we move on to F3, Employment Contract for Mohammed Z Islam, Associate Superintendent Business Services. Can I have a motion to approve this item, and then I'll read it?
Martinez?
Can I have a second?
Ayala?
Okay. And the item reads, "Approve the contract for employment for Mohammed Z Islam for service as Associate Superintendent Business Services. Prior to voting on this item, consistent with Government Code, Section 54953, the Board President will orally report a summary of the salary and compensation provided under the contract." Okay, so I'm going to read that now. This is a unilateral extension of Mr. Islam's contract by operation of Section 1 of the existing contract. We now come to item F3 on the agenda regarding the employment contract for the Associate Superintendent of Business Services. This item is to approve an automatic extension to the employment agreement for Associate Superintendent of Business Services, Mohammed Z Islam, pursuant to Section 1 of, Section 1 of the existing contract and/or Ed. Code 3501. Government Code, Section 54953, requires the governing board, prior to taking final action on executive employment, to orally report a summary of the salaries, salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for local agency executives such as the Associate Superintendent of Business Services. The automatic extension will extend the contract term to June 30th, 2021. The annual salary is $202,535. The benefits package is the same medical, dental, vision, and life insurance provided to the district's certificated management staff fully paid. Any discussion? I would like to add that we had a conversation about this in closed session, and Dr. Avila will be talking to Mohammed Friday, I think he said, about coming up with items to specify that the district wants to see improvement in, and if they do, that will extend it a second year. We had to extend it for just one year because of the type of item it is. The furthest it can go is one year.
That's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, if we can just take action on this matter, I don't believe we should be discussing items in closed session. I will follow up on our conversation as discussed, but I think the action is only for that language.
Okay, all right. For me, it's an aye to approve. Ms. Walker? Aye. Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes? Mr. Montes? All right, so it's approved with the stipulation that was agreed upon verbally. Okay. Next item is adjournment. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on September 23rd, 2020 at 7:00 PM, telephonically and via streamlined only. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the Board meeting are available upon request from the Superintendent's Office. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Martinez?
I have a second. Walker, second? All right, and now vote by board members. For me, it's an aye for Ms. Walker. All right, and now vote by board members. For me, it's an aye for Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay, well, that's it. Thank you all for hanging in there with me and, uh, getting our business done. And, uh...